Oh, boy. All right. Well, I'm gonna call a story at eight thirty-three. It's so good to be here with everybody. And today is always a great day that we get to kind of reflect on where we are and where more so where we're headed. So I always look forward to have more of the freedom of discussion today. And team members, I hope you can join in too. Today's more of a discussion day and not as formal, not that I think we're formal, but. Why do you look at this a little less formal? And really looking to our next year, we have some great things to talk about. We have some guest speakers. We're gonna talk about foundation work and around some things you've been interested in talking about. Steve and how we kind of, what else can we do or not? I've had some good discussions with our attorney about that. So there's a lot of good stuff today. And it's always good to have our friends from Trippity Smith here. Thank you for being here annually. We get to see you and hear about kind of the state of how we're telling people who we are and how that's being heard or not. And appreciate that. So thank you. So if you'll join me in the flag salute, I'd appreciate that. Oh, we can do road call then. We'll do it. It's okay. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, Liz, how about a road call? We're almost all here.
Secretary Harrowson.
Here.
Thank you, Member Holmes.
Here.
Thank you, Chairman Lewis.
Here.
Thank you. And Vice Chairman Martell is absent today. Member Siegel?
Here.
Thank you. And Member Cladwell?
Here.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, are there any additions or modifications to the agenda? The time and place to do that. Seeing none of us for a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you. Second by Steve. Thank you. Those favors, aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, thank you. Well, then we are now at the place for public comment. This is a special meeting of discussion. Huh? Regular meeting of the government. It's a special regular reading of the governing board. Which is not in the government code or the ed code, so we'll just call it a regular meeting of the governing board. This is the time and place for members of the public to speak on any item not on the agenda that is within our subject jurisdiction. Does anyone here that would like to speak to the board under public comment or any of our sites? How's looking, Liz?
Nothing has been submitted in chat or via email. Those at the sites, do you, do any of you have public comment to add?
No?
I have one.
Please.
I'd like to thank the Board for the funding that the USAID gave us for the Indian Scott, the 403B council and all that this year. That was very generous and a nice surprise. So I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. We will please be able to invest in your future. We appreciate that. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Bob.
Anything else? Okay, then we'll move on. This is actually very interesting. We have a guest speaker on the state of the charter school movement and non-classroom-based charters. I asked this to be put on the agenda because, as you know, the last few years have been kind of a hurricane for independent study and charter schools and non-classroom-based. And there's kind of this whole, we are kind of a classroom-based independent study, right? It's not, there's this, we're in this weird spot in the state of California that doesn't recognize us. And so I'd ask Eric Premack of the Charter Schools Development Center to speak with us today. Talk about what he sees, what's ahead for us and kind of what's happened and where we're headed and what we can expect. I think last year, we're finally, I guess I should say as a premise to what we're doing today. I think we all concur that the school is strong, strong financial position. We have a great staff. Thank you. Jana, the management team you put together is terrific and everything is rowing the right direction. We're all doing great. And so it's a matter of what's next, right? We received a new charter. What a great process that was. It was very celebratory and affirming. And so what's the next shoe to drop? What's the, what's happening? So I think Mr. Premack will be able to help us with that. I think he knew Jana when she was a teenager eating ice cream. So Eric, welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Can.
All right, great. Yeah, it's a pleasure to be with you all today. It's been a pleasure to know Jana for longer than either of us dare to admit and also the pleasure to work with a number of her staff, Liz and others. She was kind enough to share with me a little bios on her, on the board members and it's a very impressive board as well. So you're very fortunate to have a strong team all around. I thought I would focus my remarks mostly on the non-classroom-based sector of the, of the policy arena. As you know, there's a lot going on with fires, with budgets, with, you know, arguing with President Trump, all manner of things going on here in Sacramento, but I'll focus primarily on the non-classroom-based stuff. As many of you know, we're in the first year of the two-year legislative cycle, so we're very early in the legislative session right now. We haven't even come up to the bill introduction deadline that will come later into February. So at this point, we're only getting a little taste of what we might be up against. Little bit of background here, I think Jana has briefed you on this. We've had in the charter sector, multiple instances of financial abuses and fraud within the charter sector that have garnered a lot of attention here in Sacramento. One particularly large instance a few years ago led to the imposition of a moratorium on the creation of new non-classroom-based charter schools. That moratorium has been extended twice since then and is set in current law is supposed to expire or sunset of its own accord next January. But while that is sort of good news that it will expire of its own accord, it also builds pressure within the legislature to address some of the underlying concerns about fraud and financial abuse. I will say that I've worked in school finance, both in the charter sector and prior to the existence of charter schools. I worked for many, many school districts and county offices of education and I can assure you that unfortunately fraud and abuse is a big problem within the school sector generally. There's a lot of money changing hands and a lot of opportunities for bad people to do bad things with it. And while we've had many instances of abuse within the traditional school district side of the public school sector, including some pretty high-profile ones with school business officers buying Ferraris and that sort of thing with, with school district money. The negative attention is really concentrated on the charter school sector and in particular on non-classroom-based schools. As a result of this, we've had a number of reports and studies on these issues. The legislature called for the Legislative Analyst Office to work jointly with the Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team to study issues related to non-classroom-based instruction. They issued a report last year around this time. Then later last year, yet another task force that was appointed by a judge who had adjudicated the lawsuits or the prosecutions related to a major set of abuses, called for the state controller to assemble a task force on auditing. And they had slightly different focuses and I think Jana has gone through the details with you with the LAO FICMAT report largely concentrating on non-classroom-based issues and the state controller's office largely focusing on auditing issues. And then a third group voluntarily stepped up and did its own report. This is the Charter Authorizing Professionals Group. This is a small nascent organization that supports the school district and county office staff who do charter school oversight. And their third report on this general set of issues, they focused most on fraud prevention, which was kind of an interesting that they essentially, each of these three started with a premise that they knew what the problem was. The LAO FICMAT report sort of assumed that non-classroom-based is somehow an extra problem unto itself. The state controllers group was charged with looking at auditing as if auditing is the cause of the problem. And the CCAP report focused on fraud prevention, again with a third and different set of assumptions about what the underlying problems are that we need to deal with. If you add all three reports together, I put them all, being the policy nerd that I am, into a single spreadsheet list into my Excel file and I sat there for a few hours and consolidated the overlapping recommendations. And I think I ended up with maybe eighty-eight or ninety different recommendations if you add these three reports together. And fortunately, I will not describe them in detail today. Suffice to say that there are a lot of them and on the one hand, we're thankful for the work that a lot of these folks have done and the attention that they've put into it. On the other hand, I'm not at all sure that any of them really started with what is the root cause of the problem here. And in our view, one of the biggest problems we face in California in the charter sector is that we in California, unlike other states, rely almost exclusively on school districts to do the charter authorizing and oversight. And while there are a handful of school districts that do this well, I think for the most part, it's really a stretch for them to do it. And in many cases, they're faced, you know, a severe financial conflict of interest in doing the work. And that in most, if not all, of these cases of egregious financial abuses, they would have been uncovered very early in the process if the authorizing district had been doing even minimal oversight work. And so we think that a lot of these recommendations are arguably misplaced or are not really focused on the root cause of the problem and may be more like Band-Aids. Now, the CCAP report, which is getting very little attention among policymakers here, arguably is the one that gets closest to the root cause by looking at fraud prevention. But if you look, for example, at the controller's report, which focuses almost exclusively on auditing matters, those of you who have worked with audits before, they are inherently rearview mirror type of activities that if they ever do discover fraud or abuse, which they often don't, comes a year or more after the fact, far too late to really do anything proactively about it. So that's kind of where we are in terms of the setup coming into this legislative session. We do see already introduced into the legislative hopper, a bill, Assembly Bill eighty-four. It's authored by Assembly Member Marasucci. He's from the Torrance area, which is his district. And he is the Chair of the Education Committee in the lower house. He has been for a few years and he will continue there in this current session. He's a former school district board member himself and he's very close to the teacher unions and other major education lobbies that frankly are not very friendly to charter schools. The bill that he's introduced is still in what we call spot form, meaning it's kind of a placeholder that doesn't have a lot of substance in it and we anticipate that it will be fleshed out to have a lot more detail. In its current form, the one substantive provision in it is that it calls for the state official to study the feasibility of melding the state databases that track individual student daily attendance with the database that tracks student demographic data. We presume that their intent here is to try to track whether students in charter schools and school districts are jumping back and forth during a given school year such that the student generates more than one unit of average daily attendance per year. We also suspect that the feasibility of this will be very low or if it is feasible, that the state would end up with a very complicated statewide massive database and frankly, the state's track record of handling databases of this scale, for those of you who've had the pleasure of dealing with, say, the Department of Motor Vehicles or other state agencies that have attempted this kind of major leap forward in data reporting and handling. We're not particularly optimistic that that will go far. The rest of the bill though is, as I note, in spot form and they don't have a whole lot in the way of detail. And what it does say is that is their intent, they to incorporate recommendations from the LAO FICMAT report and from the state controller's report into the bill at some point in the future. So we are anticipating that that will be fleshed out. My staff have gone in to meet with the staff of the Assembly Education Committee, who frankly are not very charter-friendly. So they don't let me go in and talk to her because every time I go in and talk to her, it turns into a pretty pointed argument. But that's where we are right now. On the charter side of things, we have a number of advocacy groups in California that play in the policy arena. My organization, the Charter Schools Development Center, is one of them. We also have the California Charter Schools Association. They have a very formidable stable of contract lobbyists who are very active in the, in the legislature. And then we have a few smaller groups as well. And then we also have a few individual charter schools that are weighing in. And frankly, for the last few years, it's been, I might call it a bit of a circular firing squad within the charter sector over some of these issues. And so for the year and a half or so, we've been convening discussions of the major advocacy groups to develop a consensus set of policy proposals. We, I think, are getting very close to that. And in fact, later today, I have another meeting to try to flesh out draft bill language. And I think it's very likely that we will essentially introduce a separate piece of legislation to serve as a counter or foil to Assembly Member Marasucci's bill. And we will probably have a fairly extensive set of debates in the upcoming session over these issues. We're going to try to bring the issue of authorizing into the discussion and try to minimize the damage, if you will, that might be caused if the Marasucci bill is too heavy-handed. And there are a handful of recommendations that might be helpful in each of the LAO and FICMAT reports and the and the state controller's report. And we hope to cherry pick a handful of those as well. It's very difficult to tell where this is gonna go. We do sense, we did attempt to do something similar to this last year and we had introduced a bill last year. But shortly after it came in, we were contacted by the governor's staff who said, given the large financial and budgetary challenges that the state was facing and given the fact that the moratorium on new non-classroom-based schools still had a year and a half, or you know, a year and a half to go. They said it wasn't ripe and they didn't want us to run the bill. So we withdrew that bill last year. There was a separate bill run by two individual schools on their own. That bill died as well. So it's a very difficult at this point to handicap where this is gonna go. What is clear is that both pro and anti-charter forces are massing on either side of the legislative arena. And everything seems pretty ripe for good or for ill for a fairly major arm wrestle over these issues going into this first year of the two-year session. If the, if the moratorium does lift, we think that that will lead to the creation or the proposals for quite a few new non-classroom-based charter schools. We're just hearing from our members who keep asking us questions about, can we do this? Can we do that? And we have seen continued growth in the creation of classroom-based charter schools. And that remains an open lane now and we presume that it will remain an open lane for the foreseeable future. Although, given recent changes to the charter laws, getting any type of new school approved in the charter arena these days is a pretty heavy lift depending on the local politics of the districts that you're working with. I'll also note that the California Department of Education recently was awarded a very large, I think roughly $90 million federal grant that they will use over the next five years to provide startup grants for new charter schools, expansion grants for existing charter schools and replication grants for existing charter management organizations to start new schools. This is the first, this is, I think, the fifth round of such federal funding that the State Department of Ed has had over the past twenty-five years or so. And this has been a major source of seed funding for creation and launching of new schools.
Hey, Eric, can I interrupt you real quickly?
Yeah, yeah. And that was, that was about as much as I was planning to cover. And was more than happy to take your questions or dialogue with anybody that you want to.
Thank you and thank you for being here. I appreciate it. And Board and staff, present people excluded, he was my favorite boss ever. So the startup grants, dissemination grants, all of that, what, roughly per school, roughly? I know it's, you know, based on, you know, but roughly, what are you seeing?
Roughly, you know, six hundred thousand to 1.2 million, which is roughly double what they had been in the past. I think there's a recognition that starting new schools these days is a lot tougher than it used to be. You know, you'll recall Jana, back in ancient times, there was no expectation that you had a lot of, you know, you didn't have to have a special ed program frankly launched. You didn't have to have a school meal program launched and all these other things now that are mandates.
Yeah. Yes, it is harder.
So do you wanna, Eric, I appreciate you being here and questions, but Jana, maybe do you have any kind of commentary to follow up? Because my, my perception or reality, we've, most of us have been involved with this group for, you know, ten plus years, me, I think sixteen. And we had this kind of golden age of charter schools. Charter schools were the thing. California was, when we started our school, it was very permissible. It was the end thing. It was us, I think Minnesota and Florida, right? Were pretty positive.
Arizona, yeah.
We've had a whim around and a beating and I, you know, we're in a public meeting, so I'll reserve my best comments for later. But the, there are forces that took us down and it's interesting because as a result of COVID and just student performance, which continues to get poorer, the journal just was talking about reading scores continuing to fail in our country. Our schools seem more needed than ever and, and we are the alternative parents are looking for and the state continues to fight. And I just, I don't understand why, why do, but I mean, just talk about it. Why most of us, while, why we're the enemy when most of us are actually doing so much good and parents want us and kids need us, I don't understand why there continues to be energy. So I wanted to talk about that a bit. It seems there's, we went through a, three or four years ago, after Shasta Anderson and a few other things that just really whipped us around. It seemed like things have calmed, so my, my, like even the bill you described, compared to what there have been are pretty, I don't know, not, not as fierce as some have been. So I'd want to hear your thoughts on that. Kind of, are we in a lull a little bit? And the other thing that's been very frustrating to us frankly is the bad actors, I think in your group, I think we're part of your group and in the Charter Schools Association continue to get the attention when those of us who are the good, especially site-based independent study schools, we're in this niche. I mean, we're very, we're not recognized in the law, right? A site-based independent study, or are we?
They're starting to refer to us as flax.
Why, Eric? Because to me, we aren't the bad actor. And it seems to me, at what point are the Charter Schools Association gonna say, hey, wait a minute, those guys, they're bad actors. We agree with you. Cut them out. The rest of us, leave us alone. Look at all the good we're doing. It doesn't seem like we.
Yeah, I think you got three questions there. So let me see if I can dissect them. The first one is sort of what's the larger political landscape for charter schools coming out of the pandemic, et cetera? I think as many of us are painfully aware, the election in 2017, there was a tremendous amount of money coming from some of the deep pockets in the charter sector that really went after then, then Lieutenant Governor Newsom, who was running for governor and spent, you know, north of $30 million opposing him and doing it in a extraordinarily personal way. And the same with then Assembly Member, now State Superintendent Tony Thurmond. And, you know, elections have consequences and we are continuing to suffer those consequences. In 2019, we saw, you know, two major pieces of anti-charter legislation on top of the Shasta-Anderson decision that you talked about that really, you know, hit us hard. Then the pandemic hit everybody hard. So what we've been trying to do is focus on building, it would be too much to say that we have a defensive wall at this point, but we've certainly built up defensive mechanisms in the legislature at this point and have successfully blocked a number of anti-charter bills in recent years. But it takes an enormous amount of work to build that wall and at this point, it's a pretty shaky wall. And so that's kind of the political reality that we're dealing with right now. Prior to Governor Newsom, we became somewhat complacent as charter advocates because for, you know, four governors in a row from Wilson on, we had very strong support from the governor's office for charter schools. And the governor in California has enormous leverage over K-12 education because so much of the key decisions really aren't made in the legislature. They're made by the State Board of Education and the governor controls the state board appointments entirely. And so for twenty-some years, we enjoyed the strong support from governors, policy nerds like me who, you know, we have very little to zero political, you know, strength as, you know, relative to the CTA. But when you have a governor who supports you, all you have to be is a policy nerd like me and you can get a lot of things done. But when the governor doesn't support you and isn't listening to you and you have very little strength in the legislative arena, you're extremely vulnerable and that's the position we found ourselves in after Newsom was elected and that we are currently trying to claw our way out of. Shift gears a little bit and talk about the, what I'll call internal policing within the charter sector, which it's been a challenge for us. The A3 organizations, which were the ones accused of the master financial fraud in Southern California, both my organization and the California Charter Schools Association got wind of some of what they were doing very early on. And we did go to the state board and the State Department of Education and said, look, you know, we want you guys to look into this. They actually have and continue to have and have long had statutory authority to intervene in any charter school in a case of alleged fraud abuse or poor instructional activities. And they declined to do that. And that was a real loss. I think if, if they had intervened early in that, they would have easily discovered and uncovered what was going on much earlier in the process before it blew into something huge. There have been other instances where we've become aware of it and probably the least pleasant part of my job is calling up school leaders who are alleged to be running schools, doing things bad and then going and taking them out to lunch and also taking them out to the woodshed. And I do a fair amount of that work, but it can be very difficult and it can be difficult for us to discern without any investigative authority, what is going on. And so we have to ask a lot of delicate questions. It's enormously time-consuming for us to do that kind of work. And, you know, I have a staff of eight and we, we do a lot of stuff outside of that, you know, outside of this kind of thing. So it's been a, it's been a real challenge to do self-policing. But it may, it is an area where we had explored, for example, many years ago, trying to set up a separate charter accreditation body separate from WASC that had more of this kind of capacity built into it. We got very close to having launched that and almost got the University of California to sign off on it. But due to some political challenges at the time, we, we never got that kind of mechanism off the ground. And it may be something worth exploring again in the future, but it is touchy political ground within the charter sector.
That covers.
Yeah.
Ralph, give us a thought for you.
No, I just, I'm just kind of taking in. What are some of the sensitive questions that you might ask some of these organizations? I'm just kind of curious as a board member.
We see, you know, what are the relationships between the charter school and organizations that supply goods, services? organizations that supply goods, services and whatnot to the school? We've seen a number of instances where closely related parties, it may be, you know, the founders, it may be the founder's family, et cetera, who are involved in selling goods or services to the charter school. Allegations of cronyism, nepotism, that sort of thing. Other sorts of conflicts of interest. And then one of the hottest areas, particularly in the non-classroom-based sector, is a lot of charter schools will essentially set aside on their books a certain amount of money per student for student support services and instructional materials. They might set aside, say, $3,000 per year. And they will give the student and the parent a fair amount of say in how those funds are spent. And this is a very controversial practice. Some folks think it's an excellent opportunity to personalize instruction and to make resources available that can be very much customized to a particular student's needs. It's also an area that's potentially ripe for abuse. And we've seen allegations of the money is being used for expensive trips to Disneyland and, you know, that sort of thing. And I've had multiple long lunches, shall we say, with charter school leaders over, you know, what's appropriate when one uses those sorts of spending practices. It also has a, another issue related to that is what happens when a student says, well, you're giving up a lot of flexibility in spending these funds. We would like to spend them on religious or sectarian materials. And there's active litigation on that issue right now. And I've had a number of very difficult conversations with our members over those issues as well. And we've issued some pretty strong guidance on that to our membership on what is and what is not appropriate and what's legal and what's not. And one of our members is, that, or two of our members are a target of a major lawsuit that's going up on appeal and could ultimately end up at the US Supreme Court. There already is one somewhat analogous case coming out of Oklahoma City, where the Catholic Church has applied for the ability to run their equivalent of a non-classroom-based charter school that would be explicitly Catholic. And just a week or so ago, the US Supreme Court granted a writ of cert to, to accept that case. And that will be argued, I presume, later this summer.
Yeah, the Supreme Court's in a good position, shall we say.
Yeah.
That's wild.
On an argument like that.
Yes. Eric, quick question. In the Primacian crystal ball, what are the chances of the moratorium continuing rather than sunsetting?
Wow, I, I long ago learned that it's safer to go to Vegas than bet. I, you know, on the natural bills, the things that are set to sunset tend to sunset. I think if we can't come to some kind of deal or reason to compromise, I, I think the sunset extension is likely. But I think, I think it's likely that something's gonna come to a head this year. I don't, I think folks are tired of kicking this down the road. Now, that being said, you know, if Governor Newsom still has, you know, eyes on a bigger chair politically, he may want to avoid, you know, this. But I, I don't know how much longer he can afford to kick this one down the trail.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, parents and voters want it. They're voting with their feet. Look at our enrollment, traditional school enrollment. I mean, and that model's failing. I guess is our, what is our, our headwind is really the CTA. Yeah.
Yeah, and CTA, it's, it's the entire traditional school lobby. CSBA, which is the School Boards Association, when I first came to California, was sort of an independent voice that really genuinely spoke on behalf of management. My blunt sense is that today, they've essentially become the wholly owned operating division of CTA. And CTA is very good at getting its members onto local school boards. They in turn, those members that are CTA affiliated at the local school board level dominate CSBA's legislative action committees, et cetera, and have effectively hijacked that organization. The School Administrators Association is kind of on the, you know, hopelessly on the fence. But what, what you often find, I'm a public policy nerd and I call this producer capture, where essentially those, and those interest groups within the system that are the ones who produce the goods or the services essentially capture the policymaking apparatus that governs it and twist the policymaking apparatus to serve the adults in the system rather than the students. And that's been an enormous problem in California ever since we shifted from a local control state, starting in the early 70s, to a state legislative controlled system, where it was much easier for those adult constituency groups to focus their political influence and essentially turn it into a system that served them instead of one that serves students. And that, you know, people like to blame Prop 13 for, you know, defunding the schools and that's what's caused the decline in California education. But the financial reality is that even in inflation adjusted terms, the spending per student in California on education has increased dramatically since the imposition of Prop 13. And money isn't the problem. The problem is captured by adult interests for their interest at the expense of students. Off my soapbox.
Who do we want to hear?
That's why we have you here.
Eric, this, this is Steve. I, Rhodes was founded with distance education in mind before anybody else really thought about it. And the pandemic caused all the other institutions to have to do this with some dubious success. So I'm wondering where you see any technology advances? And is there any leapfrogging that we should be thinking about? The next wave of education technology?
I, my sense is that what we have seen in California and nationally, not just in education, but all of the major sectors of our economy, healthcare, you know, defense, manufacturing, whatever, is that the cost of labor is growing much more quickly than the resources in the economy generally. And so for any entity to survive, whether they're a manufacturing concern, a law firm, a medical practice, or for that matter, a school, requires bending the labor curve. And the, the main way that public schools have done this over the last 30 years is simply to increase class size. But we're now at a point where you physically can't stuff any more kids into a 700 square foot classroom. And without figuring out some fundamentally different approach than traditional classroom-based instruction, the labor costs are gonna outstrip the ability to operate and sustain a school. And so what we've seen for the past 30, 40 years in California is we've stripped public education of all of the nice and fun stuff, if you will. You know, music education's gone, athletics are stripped down to the minimum. School libraries are essentially non-existent. School facilities look like a bad trailer park. And so, yeah, it's sort of the financial equivalent, even when you're young. And in order to get out of that, I think we need to find ways to bend the labor curve. And in my view, non-classroom-based forms of instruction, virtual instruction, and in particular going forward, artificial intelligence are gonna be, you know, the key to unlocking that. And I think our friends in the school labor community are tremendously fearful of the potential for AI in particular to upend the teaching profession. If you look at a lot of what teachers do day in, day out, it may be of all of the professions, the most vulnerable to upending by AI. But in order for that to happen, there needs to be just staggeringly huge investments in coding and software to make that really work. And at this point, I don't see those investments being made. And I think one of the reasons folks who have deep pockets are reluctant to make those kinds of, you know, tens of billions of dollar investment is that they anticipate that if they are successful in coding this sort of thing, that there will be tremendous political opposition to its implementation. And public education has been tremendously resistant to using technology as anything other than a peripheral icing on the cake type of tool, which is very different from other sectors of our economy where technology isn't a bolt-on or a icing or a nice thing. It's a core tool used to leverage productivity and reduce the number of people that you need on your staff. We haven't figured out how to do that in public education. And if somebody figures that out, I think it's going to be a huge thing. And I think that the non-classroom-based sector in California may be uniquely well positioned to try to make that happen.
I agree. That, that seems to be like the, we can't beat us, join us. But they're not tooled or join us. They can't, they can't. Their model doesn't work. And parents are joining us, technology's joining us. We see our success. That's, I'm perhaps a little bullish on our future, actually, as I look. At some point, the sticking your head in the sand education model will break.
Yeah.
I think a lot of things start to break politically.
One of the, I wonder. Yeah, one of the key policy issues there in the non-classroom-based sector, for those of us who are policy nerds, is there is in current law a mandate that you generate no more than X many units of student, funded student attendance per full-time equivalent teachers. Essentially, you know, this is what labor economists would call feather bedding, where you mandate hiring of so many staff to get a given unit of work done. And, you know, until we find a way around that, we're not gonna really be able to seriously bend the labor curve. Because if you're mandated to do a 25 to 1 pupil-to-teacher ratio, you're, it's very hard to bend that curve. And we're already behind the curve, given that a traditional school district will often have anywhere from, you know, 30 to 42 students in a given class.
Any questions? Anybody?
Anything else, board? Staff?
Jana, you wanna rebuttal here, or not a rebuttal, maybe a concurrent, as our leader?
Well, I mean, you know.
All this thought, and as we, you're preparing us for today.
It does set the tone for today and tomorrow, really. And into our future and helping us develop our, our future goals, knowing, you know, Eric's got his, his fingers on the pulse of everything legislatively and charters always has. You know, wrote the law in Minnesota, wrote it here, several other states and Cutter as well, the country of Cutter. Created charter school law there. So there's no one better to tell us, you know, what, what's coming. Yeah, you had a fun time with that one, didn't you, Eric?
They got on the map of the world, Gub.
Yeah, so basically, you know, you now know how I know what I know. It started with, with Eric mentoring me many years ago. And he's a good, he's a wonderful resource for all charter schools. But you've got, you know, you got the lay of the land to set the tone for our meetings. So we don't really have anything else to add to it.
Well, thank you, Eric. We really appreciate you fighting for us. We hope to be a model for you to show others as you're advocating for the power of our independent study schools. We have a great team, as you know, and all the way, all of our team. Thank you, staff. And we have a very committed board. We're, we are a strong board. We'll put our money and time where our mouth is. And some of this stuff, we just get so frustrated watching it. I think many of us are policy geeks too. And it's just baffling what is happening here. So appreciate hearing from you and looking into the future. Hope we continue to be a model for you to use as you're advocating on our behalf.
No, we appreciate the work that all of you do and appreciate you guys being a beacon out there and hope you will continue to do that and forge forward.
Thank you. All right, well, take care. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks all.
Okay. Well, thank you for, everyone, indulging that discussion. I thought you'd find it fascinating. I've enjoyed my conversations with him. I know you think very highly of him.
He's very practical.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, dealing with things like, you know, the issue, why, even that labor issue. Very interesting. Whereas my other thing was, the traditional school is not just academics. And that's a problem I have with being, you know, going online is that they're learning to be a people at the school, engaging in social activities and so forth and so on. But I always thought, you know, charters are fine. I'd rather have people back in the regular system than they can be because there's more to it than reading and writing and so forth. You, you make idiotic mistakes and you can get away with it. Let it say, okay, you're gonna go to detention, as opposed to the police or whatever you're going. So it's a social thing. And also, I always thought he's also, I think makes the country wonderful, was it was bringing various kinds of people ethnically and socially and economically together. I mean, I met my first various minority people, the first time I met, I was in junior high. And I, oh my God, they were nice people. I mean, my revelation. But I mean, how do I learn, learn about that? And I thought schools socially were a beacon, making things operate over time. It would take decades in some cases. It was integration stuff and all those things. But it kind of brought everything together. So to me, was that public schools were a vehicle for the whole country in some ways. So when you start pulling out pieces of it, that does bother me. And I can see it, it's economic issue. I can see that as being an issue. To me, the school was bigger than how much they, how well they were doing in economics. For his courses, it was much bigger than that.
Yeah.
And even maybe more important, actually, I thought, my thing was that kids learn to be the read and write, and they learn to be good citizens.
Yeah.
And then they, one of the question coming here, that they know when they go to the school that they're respected. It may not be at respected at home so much, but they are at the school. When they come, like, when they come in the front door and say, Anna, everybody, hi, good to see you. For a lot of people, that's a big deal, huge deal, more than they think it is. So anyway, my, I mean, I can see the transition of AI and all that. It does bother me to some degree. You're gonna lose that social part because they be segmented out. I always thought our job here is pivot, we, we get kids who weren't fitting into that system and taking them out and saying, okay, look, if we could real individually deal with you, we love you, we care about you, we're gonna hold your hand and in some cases squeeze it really hard. And then you're gonna be accountable because we know where you live. And then eventually, my thing was, and they would go back to the regular system from that. And they can be successful. And say, you know what, you're here now, but it's time for you to return to the regular thing. That's my genesis about the whole thing. But anyway, he's very good and very authentic about what's, practical about what's going on, so.
Yeah, but when, when Eric used to send me to the halls of Sacramento and I would speak to legislators or small groups or whatever, they would, and this was back in the old days, you know, the dinosaur days. The legislators would ask, after a series of legislations in 1998, 99, 2000, what can charter schools do that traditional public schools can't? And at that point, after the legislations of the dinosaur days, that were way worse than anything we've experienced, to be honest with you, I said absolutely nothing. There is nothing that charter schools can legally do that traditional schools cannot. So then they would get all fluffered and they'd go, well, so, you know, you know, why aren't they doing it? And I say, it's mindset. It's habit. It's the, you know, the public school systems in the country were created, that exist now, were created in the industrial revolution. So then the legislators would say to me, what would you want for the charter, the futures of, the future of charter schools in the state of California? And I would say that we don't need them. But we do.
Interesting.
We still do. Because one of the legislative intents in the Charter Schools Act of 1992 says specifically to create competition for traditional public schools in order for them to improve.
Really?
That's in the legislative intent of the charter school of 1992. So I would look to legislators and after I've been standing up on my pedestal all day, my high horses and talking and knocking on doors, you know, begging for, you know, them to recognize charter schools. And when I told them I want to not have to have charter schools, they listened.
In your comments on that panel review, you laid out some observations that I hope aren't lost this weekend about why we're here and what we are.
Well, I think the key word is like, you talk about the pivot. Well, I think the key word is like, you talk about the pivot. I got this issue. I'm going to go someplace else. I'm going to get to me and not take that skill and then go back. Or we've all dealt with every, I think that's the key we use a lot. I think it's significant, it's significant, goes back to your competition issue as well.
And that, and that's, we all envisioned that years ago when pivot was created, and Jim and everybody, you know, put it together. But because it isn't changing, they go back and nothing's changed. Right? So there are, they are staying with us longer, and sometimes, you know, not going back at all.
Right.
Because it's, it isn't changing. And the ones that do go back sometimes come back. And Abigail can tell you a million cases of that.
Well, you, you all, you have created an environment that's very special. I think it would be hard to leave here.
Yeah.
That was what we thought we would do, is get someone, adjust it, send them back. But man, we've evolved, and you've created a culture that's phenomenal. I mean, I get that.
Yeah. He mentioned something except for small, that was economics, and I was, and dealing with money and collecting stuff. Remember one thing, we had a fiscal superintendent in finance, and her name was, last name was Lawson, who I've known for years. And I was her boss. And anyway, I noticed a lot of our services we were providing, a lot of them, that last name Lawson was on some of them who were getting construction materials. So I said, are you related to this Lawson? And she says, no. And I believed her. I mean, but I said, you're going to have to get rid of them and get somebody else. But the perception is maybe you are.
Yeah.
But it also was, also what I would, is occasionally, I would, we do, you know, it was a monthly financial thing, and I'd always go in and ask questions about various purchases, just to be curious. But I wanted to know if somebody was paying attention to some of this stuff. Things can happen. I get that. And you've got to be somebody going, oh, now tell me, why, why are we buying this? And do, and so forth. But the financial thing is always going to be an issue.
Yeah.
I asked, I asked for Liz, double my pay, and she wouldn't do it.
She, she actually did.
There's still zero?
It's still zero. She quadrupled it. So, hold your comments for a little bit, just, unless you want to hear, Board. As Sarah raised her hand, but I know we have a couple things we have to do logistically before we start actually having you all comment. But I don't know, Jim, I don't know. Sarah just raised her hand, the audience member.
Yeah.
To chime in, you want to do it now, or do you want to just wait until we get to the meat and potatoes, or?
On this conversation?
Yeah, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it pertains to the funding conversation, the presenter. I think what I heard was both that, you know, funding schools isn't really the issue. But then also later, you spoke a lot about how, you know, staff salaries aren't putting burden on districts, and it's a growing issue. So I was wondering if that could clarify.
Yeah.
Do you have that issue?
No, I think it's the model of traditional schools versus our model.
Yeah.
And, and, and they're, they're this lumbering elephant with years and years of staffing requirements they put on themselves, as opposed to us being more nimble, being able to do the instruction that we deliver. And so that's, that's how I would, I think it was really good to hear him say, on the funding side, it's not the issue, it's how we spend the money. And when I started this school 16 years ago, I was, it was, I was frustrated with the system as it was. A lot of things he said, I saw. And I was getting ready to have my first kid, and I'm like, there has to be a better system, there has to be competition in the system, there has to be a better way. And I think you all have helped us build that better way. And you see the difference in the students. So that'd be my answer. But I mean, Jana, do you have a different thought?
Well, I mean, the other part is.
It's a great question.
If there's more money, that should be able to pay the salaries.
Yes.
That's the issue. That's kind of what you said. And that actually doesn't make, that's a good question to be asking. What he said, what's there something to improve in it? But if there's money coming in to pay this, what's the problem? But there is a problem, but if there's money to cover it, I mean, like, it's illogical, in a way, what he just said. Great, to your question. And I agree with that. What's, you know, I.
And ultimately, the whole financial conversation comes down to declining enrollment right now in the state of California. I was going to ask Eric, but I didn't want to prolong it because I know the answer already. And so Jim and me, out in the meeting with the attorney that you and I had after you hung up, there's only about four counties that aren't in declining enrollment. And those are the ones that are actually embracing charters, or at least three of the four are, because they're not in declining enrollment. So we're not, you know, so even us taking some kids away, the declining enrollment is way bigger than charter schools. They like to make it look like it's charter schools, you know, but it's not. It's the whole state. And there's only four counties in the state, regardless of how many charters they have or don't have, that are in declining enrollment. So that's where the fiscal push comes in. One of the things that Mr. Lewis and I talked about many years ago, you know, starting with schools, is we want to stay small, so we could do what Dr. Halverson says we do, what we do, we care, and we respect them, and we have time to, and we want to keep them small. But then that also puts a burden on us that there's other things we can't do, like we can't compete with salaries for this, with the school districts, because they have, you know, seven, or 2,000 kids. And, you know, we have barely 200 in three of our four schools. But, you know, we have to trade, and they are too. They're having to do the same.
But that system, even every school district in my county, literally, this last two weeks, are talking massive layoffs.
Yeah.
They're breaking. All, everyone's been faking it through the COVID money and all this one-time money. We did not. Thank you, Liz. We have been responsible. We are financially solid. You know, these other schools are breaking. And I don't ever want to lay anybody off. I want you all to know you work here, and you have a solid job, and you're making a difference in kids' lives. I mean, and so I, I think, I think there's massive brokenness in a lot of these institutions that we're just starting to see. And I think the next few years is going to be really interesting. The other thing that's frustrating for us, to your point of funding, is we've been getting screwed for years, all these cutouts, and, oh, you're independent study, you don't get it. We're going to put money, you don't get it. And so our, our type of school has continued to get cut out of some of these funding formulas and things. So we get like the minimum, based on, from a traditional school, which is also very frustrating, because we're serving the students that really need it. We're, we're, we're helping. It's, it's just damn frustrating, which is why I wanted Eric to speak. Well, you agree with that, right? That there's, we keep getting cut out of stuff.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. We don't have access to the same funding. But those grants that he was talking about, just putting that out, we do have access to, just saying, as long as there's not a moratorium on it.
Those are for starting schools, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's also.
Or expanding.
Just replicating.
What does that mean?
So an existing successful school program, if they apply and qualify for a grant, can create a new school of the same type. So if there was another geographic location that we wanted to consider opening another pivot charter school, and they deemed that as, you know, if we qualify or secured the grant, it would be a starter grant for that new school to replicate the pivot model somewhere.
Ralph and I talked about this when we spoke a couple weeks ago. There are also dissemination grants for schools that are already existing to disseminate best practices. And as Eric said, this is the fifth time in 25 years that they have re-upped these. No one is applying. There's very few applying. The money is sitting there.
Great. We'll talk about that in an hour and a half.
Exactly.
The, just for a little, people, you know, I always enjoy this meeting, as I said, because it's kind of a moment to pause and learn, and have some of these discussions, and then focus on the future, right? So, I mean, Eric set it off really well, and we're going to have some other discussions. But one of the big impediments is like, well, why doesn't everybody have a charter school? These things are great. Why don't we, it's money, right? And so.
Eric always said for many years, if it was easy, there'd be more of them.
That's right. And so our school, you heard the old bar napkin story with Mr. Harris and I, when we talked about it. But I talked this company out of a million bucks to start.
1.7.
It was one, well, that's what it ended up being. That's what it ended up being. I talked them out of a million bucks to get our school going on a note. So I signed it, but I, but I didn't want to be personally responsible for it, so I had to get creative with that. And, and it was a million bucks. And it ended up, we lost $700,000 over the course of the, so it was $1.7 million, as Ms. Gaskell said, to get us. So just so they appreciate. And one of the more strategic things, and in years, I look back on it, I told Mr. Harris and his company, the note cannot be transferable. We're doing business with you. And if something happens to you, I don't want that to happen to us. And we hemmed and hawed about that, and his board hemmed and hawed because the securitization of the note wasn't there.
I laugh now.
You would have, you're a banker. But my charm offensive was in the growth of the school.
Charm, charm. He's very strong, char.
It was that we would grow and be, in the ed code, we could, I was shocked, we could buy their product, that they invested in us and we could actually buy them. You couldn't do that in the government code right now. And so, but you could, and they were, they were interested in their growth. Anyway, long story short, just for some of you who are newer to the program, I mean, that 1.7 million was our boss. That's what caused us to start. And we were hamstrung by this.
That was a long time ago.
A long time ago. That money probably three million, two and a half, three million.
I actually shared that story recently. Which one of you had suffered through that? Somebody suffered through it the other, I haven't told it in a long time. But some of my, one of the staff.
You've been a long time. You remember this. I don't know, the rest of you, I think, are newer. But you were with us, right?
But it was wonderful in the end.
Oh, yeah.
So it's just, good to know where we came from.
For us, not them.
Yeah. Oh, here now we are, over $10 million operation, right?
Moving on now?
Yes, we do.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for, that was, I'm, I know. Thank you for indulging me for two minutes, three, four minutes, whatever. Okay, we are moving on. I hope you all enjoyed that discussion. I thought that was terrific, and I wanted to set us up. So on that note, Tom, you're being a little mouthy for being up for election right now. The next item on the board, Mr. Holmes and I were the nominating committee, and we had a very difficult dialogue after the meeting last November. We are the nominating committee. We did not have a difficult dialogue. It was actually very easy. We have two very talented board members, and Tom Halverson and Pat Martell. And, no, we all tease each other, but seriously, I mean, you have your background and your passion for kids and your education. We're fortunate to have you on the board. There's no doubt about it. And I don't say it enough to you. So, nice, but you deserve it. We're very lucky to have you. And I was, you were one of the board members, I was like, ah, how much time is Tom going to keep giving us?
Don't even say that out loud.
Well, because he travels. He travels a lot.
Quit giving excuses.
That's not what I'm saying. You enjoy traveling, you enjoy traveling. I know you have a number of other pursuits, nonprofit work and things you do. And so you're one of those board members, like, ah, I don't know, you know, I don't take it for granted that you serve with us. So thank you. And so Tom did want to continue. And Ms. Martell, she's ill, I'm sorry. I think you're listening, Pat. You offer so much managerial advice. You're one of my mentors. And you have led public institutions so well with such grace and a great perspective. And so we're very fortunate to have both of you. So it was a very short nominating committee meeting for Mr. Holmes and I to recommend Ms. Martell and Dr. Halverson be reappointed to the board for a full term. So that is my report on that. And so I would submit to nominate and reelect Dr. Halverson and Ms. Martell to the board. Ralph, do you think, say you were a cool member?
I, I think you covered it all. Thank you, Jim. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I put a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Do you have OJ, or anything, you go get, you stuck with these people again?
Wait a minute, you're a big guy. You're a big guy.
I got the last three seconds.
Set you up with that.
I guess so. They're smiling, I guess. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You said aye, aye, aye?
Wait, he didn't.
Oh, he's thinking. Aye.
He's my driver.
You two meet each other.
Well, the way he drove over here, wow, this year.
Oh, a little brevity. Congratulations. Thank you for committing to us.
Thank you for your service.
And Pat, thank you for committing to us and continuing to serve on the board. Appreciate you, and I hope you feel better. Okay, so we have two, for the rest of the meeting, we have two more presentations. Our friends at Phebe Smith are going to talk to us about our marketing efforts, and this kind of how people perceive us, and how we're telling our story. And then Jana's going to walk through and give us more background information. Oh, Abigail's going to do that? Great, okay, perfect. Walk us through, we have a little game we're going to play in the middle of that, no?
No, I think we're going to nexus.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Last time I went to Shepherd's, you guys were kind of mad at me, so I'm giving up.
It sounded good on the phone when we were planning the meeting, but I was kind of looking at it. We were going to have, tell the truth and tell a lie, but we're not going to.
Two truths and a lie.
We'll play that game with the bar tonight. Okay, let's pass on that. We're in a public meeting, aren't we? Well, that's a social occasion with you. Okay. All right. So on that note, I'll pass it over to Phebe Smith. Thank you.
Please, Kaylee.
Kaylee, go ahead.
Kaylee, I can't read the talk.
I know, I'm so sorry.
That guy always keeps it. Oh.
For magnetic.
Liz, he's being honored. He's being honoring.
There we go.
You get the gist.
I'm reading it for sure. I didn't think about it. Now you made it.
Hey, I just make it up.
Yeah, that was good. Thank you. Yeah, so I just thought I'd start off by kind of zooming out on our goals and the different avenues that we pursue to work on our marketing efforts for good. So really, when we're doing marketing, it's about client awareness, driving reputational growth, and then ultimately, our enrollment activity. So we do several things in order to meet all these goals. Listen here, we have our creative services, graphics graphic design, for our advertising, videography, our newsletters that we send to parents and students, as well as other stakeholders, website management on our old or pivot sites, sound manage, branding, collateral with flyers, just to get the pivot word out in the community, award and recognition, to kind of build that reputational awareness, email communication through the existing platforms of Parentsware, to go straight to parents that are currently with pivot, photography and other branding things to keep everything current and reflecting the pivot experience and story here, and the general online presence, stakeholder engagement, written content, and then, of course, our digital advertising that you all are familiar with. So kind of looking at our team that helps support all this, making this happen, we have writer Nicole here, who serves as kind of our strategic oversight. And then our other folks in that darker blue, myself, Olivia and Julia are the core commercial strategy and operations team that worked with Gina and Abigail and now Anna, to help support all of these different efforts. And then we also have a really wide team. We've grown a lot in the past few years, to help support creative services through the specialized photographers, videographers, graphic designers, and then a few folks who actually aren't here, but have touched pivot in this last year, digital advertising experts, media experts, and other expertise areas that offer just a wider breadth of expertise in approach to marketing. So I like to start with this question, and how did you hear about pivot? We include this in the student information system enrollment interest form, so that we can get a look at, from each campus, what students are reporting, or parents that are enrolling their students are reporting, how they heard about pivot. So you can see here, kind of outlining these two white boxes. North Bay is really driving from word of mouth, from friends and current students. And then North Valley Riverside in San Diego, Google is really how they're primary, primarily hearing about pivot. And because of the student population size at North Bay, it kind of skews friend and current students as the number one, overall word of mouth enrollment, and then Google being the number two. And then, of course, it's rounded out by other efforts on social media, and the website, and.
The counselor one, the current school one, was higher than I expected for North Bay.
What'd you say?
The current, current school or counselor was a little bit higher than I would have expected, which is great. I mean, it's a good thing.
Yeah, that's.
It's almost as much as Google.
Yeah.
Which is.
That is the number of students, right? Was the, was the?
Yes, that is the number of students.
Number of students. How they heard about.
From North Bay, yeah.
Of those who responded. That is actually interesting, because that speaks to the relationship we have or didn't know we have with the school.
Well, we do, we, we did know we had those relationships with counselors. It's above counselors that were part of the.
But that's interesting.
I know.
When you're talking to the superintendent, like, where our kids come from, you.
I know.
So clearly, your own team sees a value in us.
And I'm actually, I mean, look at San Diego's and North Valley's, too. I mean, yes, pretty significant in the grand scheme of things. So, thanks.
Yeah. And then there are a few ways that we try and extend this word of mouth outreach. So for each of the schools, we introduced a few years ago, a welcome packet concept with tote bags and a few other branded swag items, water bottles, so that people could wrap pivot out in the community and kind of build school pride internally, in a way that would kind of make them proud to be part of the pivot community and more likely to reenact. and, um, more likely to re-enroll as well. Uh, this year we introduced pivot t-shirts and some of these fun stickers that, um, those did put on various things. So that's for the representing pivot. Um, we can see here, this was the San Diego, um, campus at the, um, meeting for the charter renewal and, um, just fully wrapping the IM Pivot new, uh, t-shirt that I've been about this year. I love that photo. Yeah.
What a night that was. That was the high points of my time on the board. Yeah, I agree. Hearing those alumni.
Emotion off.
Go pivot San Diego.
And then we also help amplify current student, uh, outreach with our digital newsletters. Those come twice a year, once a semester, um, focusing on key topics of student spotlights, staff spotlight, um, pro, program updates, looking for enrollment and other opportunities, um, like that, that students can explore. And then a personalized message from Gina. So this really is intended to, um, reach the current students and families, build that, um, community and pride, um, but it also goes to other stakeholders, including leads from the past, um, three years and other partners like counselors, authorizing districts, just to kind of keep everyone abreast of what's happening in the pivot community. And then speaking of other partners, we also, um, try and engage them throughout the year, um, through a few different methods. So we send around, in November, uh, just like the thank you card, um, that's customized each year to these stakeholders here, all their, their school district, governing boards, non-profit.
I've never seen that. That's nice.
Yeah. Um, so we'll mail that to them.
We will send those to you.
You don't, you don't, you don't care about all we make. That's really nice.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's why we have you here. So we can all see, I serve on another board that works for Pepe Smith and like three fourths of things they're doing, none of us even know they're doing. So it's, which is really frustrating to that. So it's good.
Yeah, so like I was trying to see how it is time to kind of focus on the wider breadth of how everything kind of comes together to boost the reputation and the awareness in the community and of course then ultimately, um, enrollment. And so.
Sorry, I just want to observe too. I just, between prior imagery, we've seen this, the consistency in brand coloring and whatnot.
It's great.
Nice after pre-writing everything, all executed on, it's, you know, those things have to sustain.
Well, even like the 2024 is the branded butterfly or flying man, or you can be whatever you want to be. We won't argue what that is. But it's a nice, very true, yeah.
Yeah. And so then inviting them to operations as well. And now that we have Anna on as the key liaison, it's super exciting to be engaging, um, representatives, bringing them on campus and then our team helping draft, um, news articles, God, incorporating letters in the newsletter and having all kind of around together. And then going on from the Google side of things, um, there's a few ways that we, outside of the digital campaign, help engage the efforts there. One being a partnership with niche that we, um, explored two years ago and that we renamed. Um, we now have like sponsored listings for all four of the schools, um, that helps drive search engine optimization on Google. Um, and then also kind of creates a more objective third party evaluation of the schools where folks can, we have control over this platform with the exception of the rankings and gradings component, um, so we can customize the imagery, really give some life to each of the pivot campuses. And then, um, current students or former students and parents have the opportunity to review the school, kind of like a Yelp style platform. And, um, this has been really great, um, in just getting some overall traffic, having positive reviews. You can see, I don't have the screenshot of North Bay, but it's a sitting thing here, um, where all of the schools have five star reviews. So it's really awesome to have the context of, um, current students and former students speak to how pivot was really successful for them and their experience. And then on the right side here, you can see, um, the Google business listing. So we secured ownership of the Google business listing. So when you search, for example, pivot San Diego, that's what will show on the right side of the screen with the kind of summoning information. And taking ownership of that allows us to control the information on here, um, with, uh, regard to like the photos. So adding things there to also kind of keep up the content and personalize the, um, viewing experience a little bit more to offer some kind of color commentary on, um, what pivot really is and people looking into it. And then of course we have the websites, uh, so keeping these regularly updated and maintained, um, refreshing imagery and content and making sure that we have all of the program information updated. So that when folks are visiting, um, pivot, they have this great home base of information, of views and things that are happening, um, at, at the schools, different opportunities like the concurrent enrollment and guaranteed admission programs that have continued to kind of grow and evolve and keeping all that information up to date, um, so people can explore the programs.
How, how often do you update?
We evaluate it regularly. We, we will do updates kind of on call when pivot staff send us something to add. And then we also will do like a monthly evaluation to, um, kind of audit it and make sure that everything is fresh and accurate.
With Anna coming on, there's, she's been doing a lot of, you know, sending out things to Pepe Smith to put up there. Abigail does a lot. And Abigail, Rachel Angelus, who's halftime my assistant and then halftime teacher, she also has worked with Abigail and, and me on the policies, making sure, there are so many policies and some have to go in a handbook, some have to go on the website, some have to go in a specific place in the website, some have to be wherever. And so we did this whole evaluation and then threw it all at them and said, make it happen, basically. Um, so that's another thing that happens on an annual basis because they're constantly doing new policies. So, you know, so things like that happen just kind of.
Wait, the, the news segment? No, I, I hadn't looked at the website for a little bit and I was shown this week, actually two different people asked about the school, what I was doing this week and, and I was bragging about it. And pulling up like the deputy mayor and the guaranteed admissions thing, they saw that, were like, oh, you know, it was like this, that's a really cool part of the website that updated news, because it really validates our brand and what we're doing. So that, that's, that's back to what I said, you know, there's, let me see, you, you help market, there's more than marketing. You're, you're telling the story and actually validating is more to it than that. So I thought that was really cool as, you know, you're showing that there, that we did that. That's an important thing.
Well, I think it's also to my observation, Jim, for any organization, it's good to shift momentum.
Yes.
You have things going on. So if people want to see, like they, you can see you're telling a story, but they don't see, is that actually doing, like what's, what blocking and attacking is happening to get there. So when you have those stories and wins and you show that, people see, oh, this, this is a place that's winning and winners like to hang with winners and that's attractive. So.
Each one of those news articles really comes from, uh, like different places throughout your organization, like Luis on the doors for educational, the guaranteed admission, then Anna getting the deputy mayor here. Um, and then, um, you'll hear a little bit later that Anna's doing a lot more of the social media because we've always struggled and by we, it's us, but it's really them of getting the information to Truppi Smith. We never had anybody who was continuously focused on getting the information to Truppi Smith and now Anna is doing that, um, as part of her outreach efforts. So it was, they, they get better. They, they're only as good as the stuff we feed them.
Right, right.
So, um, it's gotten, it's gotten way better. So thank you, Anna.
My only question, every time, I probably wouldn't read all those articles. If I was looking at it, that's a lot of words. And my other thing would be I, I, for this district, they're starting a, uh, must say newsletter now. It's all pictures.
Oh, neat.
Essentially. And because there's all these kids in it. And of course, your kids in it for sure, you're gonna talk about it. And you're gonna photograph it or whatever. But I thought it was ingenious in the fact that she, she's selling students. She's not selling information. There's very little narrative. And it was none. It said, this is the school, this happened, period. I'm looking, I don't really look at that stuff, but she, they go to all the retirees and everybody gets it. All those, her parents have signed up the emails or whatever it is. And it was ingenious as selling the school that they're not doing that kind of a thing. And, but I sent her items, I had a lecture there. I said, the idea of having, if my, my son is in on those pictures, I'd lock onto it. So my only thing is I, I look a very brief thing and I'm just gonna scan what it says. How do you grab me? Make me stop and look at it. Okay? I mean, I saw one, it was LA Times, well, they had a big blue ball on one page three years ago. That was all it was. You can't tell me I didn't stop and stare at it. And then you turn the page and they say, in effect, in a great few words, you just saw our ball. This is what our company is. Now, I, I stopped and looked, we all did. So my thing is narratives are fine, but I'm not complaining about this, but I would sit, I would sit, sit with people like me. You gotta think of idiots like me and think, who did this idiot look at? And it's brevity and visual. And then get me, maybe you might say on there, pivot does this, we're the dog in X. Bright words. Okay, now I'm gonna read that. Or at least a little bit of that. I'm not gonna read a bunch of series of articles. I won't do it. So you think about idiot like me, I was thinking about that. But anyway, my predecessor, successor, I should say, at the district now, I was doing a sales job with just pure pictures.
You know, younger people consume less of that, more of that. Even videos over 30 seconds anymore.
Right. You got it. How do you get my attention? So anyway, I just passed it along as what she, what successor's been doing on this. Very simple. But it's like, get my, make me stop and look. You put a lot of words, I'm not gonna look. So my, my suggestion, I'm not sure if this works and it will be effective. Anyway, I just saw like, I went to the little, but my first time working was doing it.
And I can speak up a little bit. So we've worked to kind of really enhance the amount of photos that we've been able to use. Of course, that's something that has been established through partnership with staff and getting the photos from them. And then also our team organizing photo shoots at the campuses. So this past year, we did photo shoots at North Bay and North Valley so that we could have a stock library of images that we can reference in our advertising, in our newsletters and things like that. So also when these articles go out to families, they are paired with imagery in the newsletter. Um, and it's only a shorter segment of the article that's linked and that's a, you can, it'll jump to the website.
Or you did cell phones photos, like what she was doing. They're simply somebody's phone. Took it, sent it to you to send out. Have you done that day? Anyway, I just, it was just, yeah.
Terrifying point on that. We need to up with the two newsletters a year that are happening. We're using photography from those schools for that campus's newsletter.
Alrighty. And then of course, we can't talk about Google without and social media. I'm talking about the digital campaign. Um, so this is kind of a high level overview of all of the campuses over the campaign period. And something exciting about this year's advertising is that we were able to, um, for the first time, track direct enrollments from our campaign. So by directed moment, I mean folks who saw the ad, clicked on the ad, and then from the ad directly filled out a student information system interest form. Um, so what that doesn't capture is anyone who saw the ad, clicked on the ad and scrolled website a bit and came back and filled out the form or called the school or visited the school. Um, so there's a wider breadth to what, um, is encompassed in the advertising. Um, so there's more eyeballs that see it and they take enrollment action maybe later on in the journey. And you see that in the how did you hear about pivot section reflected, um, how many people are hearing about pivot through things like Google. Um, but we're able to see like a first time, um, folks that would have not enrolled had there not been, um, the digital campaign. So kind of exclusively attributed to the, um, campaign. So here we can see, um, that there was 21 enrollments, um, exclusively due to the campaign, um, which puts if there were no other benefits to the campaign outside of, you know, brand awareness and, um, multiple points in the user journey, that would put the cost per student at just about $2,000. And then we look more holistically at enrollment during the campaign period, um, to factor in kind of those other elements of folks hearing about the school through Google and then the other multiple touchpoints that our work in advertising, um, does throughout the campaign period. And that would put the cost per student overall across all four campuses at $118, um, dollars per student. So.
Well, that's a huge difference. I, I had not seen that until nine o'clock. So, yeah, I mean, it's, that's a.
The two numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Huge difference. I don't know what that means, but we'll explore it.
Yeah.
When we were losing 1.7 million dollars, I think we were spending about $20,000 this time.
I remember. It was, it was 10.
It was 10, yeah.
It was.
Don't talk about this.
Just trying to put this in perspective.
Look how successful we are.
I'm being reflective of my old age here.
I don't know what that means, but we can talk about it. Like, so, like, so what, right?
Yeah.
I have bottom numbers, the total spend on the campaign.
Yes. So then diving more specifically into the different campuses.
Look at Bob back there.
And some D's, so that is our beach ring, um, some of the two.
You're there. Fame is down.
Um, so looking at the campaign specifically, um, for North Bay, by the end of our campaign period, um, the targeted, they were at 93.2% of the targeted enrollment that they were seeking, um, by mid-November. So the campaign ending in September. Um, and then kind of looking at the sort of dashboard of other things that we're factoring at the same time. We have, um, the niche profile, niche profile views, um, that's the review platform. And then the grade that niche applies to the school is, um, through that objective evaluation on their side. That's a factor of academics, um, extracurriculars, teachers, um, student and parent feedback. And, um, I think those are the, the main pieces of the niche grade.
So you probably said this, but over what period of time is this?
So the niche profile views, that's over the 2024 year duration. Um, the targeted enrollment, um, reached is by the end of September.
From when? So when's the start date? I'm sorry.
The start date is in early May.
Okay.
Is it the same time when it goes?
Yes. So for the whole campaign, for a call, of course, the timeline is basically September 15.
So the board remembers, we've played with this campaign timeline. We've switched it on and off over years. And we've learned this is our sweet spot, right? It's like, you know, we used to do it for second semester and we're like, oh, but you know, we're not gonna, eh, no. And we're full and we don't have staff. And then we're like, okay, do we start in March? Well, now parents aren't really looking. Well, then they stopped looking in June because everybody's just sick of school and so anyway, we've played with it on and off. And this is just kind of where we've gotten with our sweet spot. But that niche grade of a B, that's the first time I've seen that. I could go in more often. We also do campaigns to drive parents to these websites to give us good reviews. Um, and occasionally Truppi Smith will let us know when something came in yucky and I, you know, we try to reach out to the parent. Um, so.
Yeah. And on niche, nothing negative has been.
Yeah. So in the past, other, there were niches new. There were other websites that used to do this that used to tend to deal with more often.
Yeah. And I'll note too, that none of the schools have a grade lower than B, which is also really exciting. Um, and then this middle section here, looking at the website, um, from 2024, we have the average engagement time on the website being a minute and 24 seconds, which is a decent amount of time to kind of explore and, um, fill out the form. And then the top three pages being homepage and enroll now and parent resources kind of showcasing, it's a solid blend between, you know, parents leveraging the site as a resource and, um, it being driven, traffic driven from our, um, marketing campaign.
Yeah. That's interesting. 99,000, that's huge.
And then, yeah, okay, good. And then this bottom right here is more on some of the other efforts. So I know we talked about the newsletter a little bit, um, with North Bay, their, um, average open rate for this past year's two newsletters was about at 52.2%, and kind of considering, um, email newsletter open averages, um, it's much higher. Where that sits at about 36%. And then on social media, we also have done more regular content and really working to personalize the content to each school over the past, um, two years. And so those are the posts and we get about 60 eyeballs on each post, um, this last year.
Can you make a sense on the, if you go back, yeah, on the 99,000 views, do you, do you track how many of those click through to the site? How many click through to the enrollment page and then how many enroll? Is there that funnel?
We're not able to go from the enrollment page to the how many enroll, just because it's two separate systems. Um, so we can see how many go to the enrollment page and for this one, that's the number two top page on the site. Um, but because the enrollment itself goes through the pivot to information system, we're not able to track like where people might get lost between those two platforms that that exists.
But we can, like, we can funnel, you can see through, through all that, lets the funnel of like land on one page, go to enrollment page and then they just.
Right, right.
Yeah. And I presume that most of the traffic for the enroll now would be direct traffic because that is the landing page for digital ad campaign. So when we're getting clicks on that campaign, it's, it's routing to that page.
Which page?
The enroll now.
The enroll now. Oh, okay.
And then this, um, is looking specifically at, um, North Bay's digital campaign. So we can see here, um, that over the course of the campaign, there were five direct enrollments, um, exclusive to the campaign. And then of course, other enrollment activity happening at the same time as a result of, um, seeing idols from Google, from social media and from other word of mouth efforts, um, putting the total cost per student, um, in North Bay advertising at about $60 a student. putting the total cost per student in North Bay advertising at about sixty dollars a student.
Listen, that's great.
I hadn't seen that. Yeah.
And then we also leverage additional outreach.
Can we go back to that? Just make sure I understand that.
Yes, of course.
Sorry. So five, so the, 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 the five, that represents what now?
Those are people who, when they clicked on our ad, they enrolled on the spot.
Okay.
So we can track that activity because the path is like the form, and we can reference the form that they submit to us. The student name, we reference the student names that ultimately end up enrolled at Pivot.
Okay, okay. And so how you allocate the dollars to that? How did that?
Yeah.
I assume that's the total, like, we spent about ten thousand dollars on the ad campaign, and we just basically took the total ad campaign costs and divided by five. That's what cost twenty-one hundred. Twenty-one hundred.
So maybe that's overstating it, right? Because, well, so the number down below is the total number of enrollment, but.
During that period, yes.
So if I can offer a narrative comment, which is particularly, this is North Bay, right?
Yeah.
So North Bay already has big reputation. We saw that in some of the earlier data, right about reputational referral within the industry. So indeed, having that other pipeline or methodology for referring students that lose the overall cost of our advertising campaign per student because we're actually picking them up in other ways. So Kaylee's identified just the straight pure digital leadership only to get into filling out a form, which is the five. But there's other advertising dollars we're spending that maybe don't result in immediate enrollment.
But that's kind of where I'm hitting at.
Exploring a website and then calling, you know, the front desk, doing a tour, and then enrolling. In which case, we don't, aren't, we're getting credit for it being the top number. But it certainly dilutes the cost kind of per student enrollment. And that's.
That's, that's really what I was thinking.
Yeah, and I would expect we're gonna see this, that bottom number per student will rise in other schools only because there's such a strong referral network inside North Bay or built at other schools.
Good, thank you.
And I'll also offer, so on the form journey, basically what happens is, and how we're able to do the cost referencing to attribute the digital campaign credit, so to speak, for these enrollments, is that we'll have the form enter the student name. So there's a lot of cases too where someone sees the ad, clicks on it, and maybe doesn't actually fill out a form even from our page. They're exploring other outlets of the website, or they close the ad, but they have an out there awareness of Pivot. That's something that we use that data essentially, so we can't track it back to the campaign, but is likely a factor in this one hundred eighty-two number. And then we support our digital advertising efforts with additional outreach in the San Rosa community. So we have cinema family magazine ads for that, so it's listed here. And we also do an ad in the San Rosa Metro Chamber Guide. And then we've also done more across all campuses in getting out in the community. And so sourcing events for folks to go to. We've done this for the past few years, the movie nights in San Rosa's park. And so that plays a commercial for Pivot that we developed a few years ago. And then we have opportunity to do with staff, so thanks for anything.
They look way too comfortable.
Greens is like chilling, you get some rosé underneath that chair. I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
I did walk around and talk to them.
I'm kidding. You know, I can't think of someone much better to have than you up here, sitting in that booth. I think that's, it looks so professional, I, I don't know, I'm saying, you should. It just is, this is good collateral for us to see. Again, I don't go see the Pivot booth in the park and you guys sitting there. And so that just looks really great. And I think the print ad stuff, like, well, that's a very small portion of our recruitment. There's more to us than that, right? There's how do we, how do we present our brand to the business community and the elected officials and the public? So I'm glad to see that we're still investing in those kind of things because it shows that we are legitimate and we're, we're here, you know?
We gotta keep our name on people's radar.
Yeah, I mean, even if people may not have kids.
Yeah.
They know about it. I was talking to someone the other day about our school, I don't know, I just want to tell you, remind me later. I was talking, and they knew about us up here, and they don't have kids. I was like, cool, so it's this kind of stuff, you know, it was really neat.
Awesome, then taking a look closer into North Valley's efforts. Kind of the same overview here, a little lower on the targeted enrollment reached by the end of the digital campaign. I'll touch on that a little bit more on the next slide with the overview. But we spend less on digital in North Valley strategically. And then we have the niche profile views, and those are a little bit lower relative to other campuses as well. But we do more of a sponsored listing, like, we add some impression dollars to San Diego and North Bay and Riverside, knowing that they have a stronger, like, resonate, they resonate stronger with doing more of the online advertising. And so looking at the website, similar overall to how North Bay is in terms of the timing and website view quantity largely due to the campaign. We can see too that the staff page kind of swaps out the campaign resources in terms of one of the top three pages. And then looking here, bottom, the average newsletter opens, still about the industry average of thirty-six percent, a little bit lower than North Bay, but still strong overall. And then we have also social posts that can help build out the online presence of Pivot and showcase what's happening specifically at the North Valley campus.
And the impressions, the five or six impressions, what do you mean by impressions?
So that's how many eyes see the content overall, yeah. So per post, we get about twenty-four eyes on each post. And then looking at the digital campaign, you'll see, kind of looking at the graph element, that the cap on spending is a little bit lower. So relative to North Bay, well, actually, relative to all the schools, it's about half of the advertising dollars put into the digital campaign in North Valley just because we've evaluated this on an ongoing basis here over the year, the performance and the way that digital advertising works, being that you're only able to spend what will drive traffic. So spend only is corresponding to ad activity. And so seeing over the past years that North Valley consistently hasn't been able to, like, maximize the budgets that we've allocated for it when we did it more equally corresponding across all the campuses. So what we did, and based on conversations in, with staff locally, is put more of that into the initial outreach directly in the community. So I'll get to that on the next slide a little bit too. But just kind of rounding out on the digital campaign piece, we had four direct enrollments in the campaign that we could track, and then fifty-eight overall enrollment during the campaign period. But with the forty-two percent reporting on that how did you hear about us form that they heard about the school through Google. So that, the digital campaign accounted for about seven percent of enrollment directly during this campaign period.
We may want to, that forty-two is higher, I think, so than.
Yes, and North Bay is the lowest just because there is so much concentration on the word of mouth.
But I mean, it's higher than North Valley in prior years, so we may want to take a look again at the digital and maybe up it a little bit, so.
I guess a quick question on that. When you're, I think your comment about we can only spend so much because we max out, I, I assume that's because it's the Google search term advertising?
Yes, so we leave the Google search more, like, looking at the numbers here. So we leave the Google search at about three thousand, which is somewhat on par with other schools. But we reduced Facebook and we reduced.
Because it wasn't being used, so.
So we still have a present there because the way we approach it and the way that the traffic kind of works is across all the campuses trans-wise. Google is more about users that are kind of ready to take an enrollment action in their journey. We have it connected to keywords. So you're searching charter school, you're searching a competitor's school, you're searching a low-maid school, or whatever it might be. That's gonna drive the ad and the traffic to the site. So it's more of an audience that's ready to make an enrollment decision or is like really thinking about school more specifically. Facebook, we approach more as like a brand awareness, building visibility for the school. It's targeting specifically parents and certain age groups in the region. But it's not necessarily, we can't determine if that parent is happy at their current school or whatever it might be based on keyword research. So historically, and just generally speaking across all the campuses, Google will drive more of the direct forum submissions, but Facebook will drive more impressions than clicks.
It was interesting, because I was sort of saying that, I was thinking about, while our age of parent is consistent, because you gotta be a certain age to be a parent, and the type of student we recruit is that age of parent. But the generation of that parent's changing. And so, you know, Facebook's old people, social media, and that's probably too old for our parents now. Sorry, I'm turning fifty next week, so I'm kind of into this generation thing. I don't look at Instagram, I'm terrible at it, you know? My kid, I don't even know what she's, I mean, I don't know what she's doing. Red envelope or whatever, I don't know, I mean, whatever it's called, I don't know. What is it called? I'd actually, it's red something, but yeah. Well, you know, I don't know, I mean, and so red envelopes, Chinese New Year, I'm thinking about Chinese New Year. But my, but I would think Facebook is gonna become more of a Chamber of Commerce newsletter app. Than it is a, right? Are you, are you saying that as you, I mean?
But I'll certify that Facebook is both Facebook and Instagram. So we advertise through Meta overall, and so they're structured on Instagram as well.
Oh, that's interesting, okay, I got you, it's all the platform.
So, yeah, when we say Facebook advertising, that is.
It's all Zuckerberg.
We're not on growth.
Oh, that's true.
Feel better, Rob?
I don't think there's an audience there.
Yes.
What'd you say? Yeah. All right, save us from ourselves.
So this part gets excited for North Valley. If you look on the right here, those are.
I didn't wait to billboard, I got.
Right when we come into town.
Awesome.
Yes, so that was something that we heard from staff was feeling like billboards are what people notice in the community.
That's cool.
In North Valley, especially along Highway ninety-nine, so.
Right at the traffic light, because when you're stuck at that traffic light, right there.
So we explored that this year, and knowing that billboards are a more significant dollar investment, kind of should usually reallocate things on the digital side too. So we did the digital billboard as a new piece of advertising this year. That went for a eight, six or eight week period in the summertime. And they reported that it got over a million impressions from the traffic placement of it.
How much, how often were we there, like, ten seconds every minute, or?
Seven seconds. And it cycled with a few other ads, so it's a digital billboard.
Yeah, right, right.
It's a plumbing company.
Was it like towards Home Depot and the hotel, the Dutch Bros?
Before, great, before you get to the major Chico exits, right as you're coming out of town. Are you, yeah, yeah, south, yeah, coming from the south.
Okay.
Right after, there's always an apartment billboard as you're coming in, and it's right after that. They always have dogs in their apartment ads.
Cool.
So that's how I knew that.
The total cost for the billboard was five thousand dollars.
Oh.
We were able to work a little bit of a deal on that one.
Too reasonable.
Yeah. And then kind of going hand in hand with that is the bus shelter ad. So we've explored other kind of transit related ads in North Valley before. We've done bus side ads, and we've done bus shelters before. But this year, we kind of worked with the representative a little bit to be more strategic about the location. Before, we had one kind of near the school. We decided to opt for a location that became available in front of Chico Junior High, so we can.
Perfect.
Have the ability of parents who are picking up kids.
I didn't get any phone calls from the district.
Good.
And then we also just are in kind of some other regular print ads that we've done in the past. The North State Parent Charter Track Three, so we're in that publication throughout the year. And then the Chico Chamber of Commerce Track Three as well. And then, did you have a question?
I don't know if I'm allowed to speak.
Yeah, no, so tomorrow during the meeting, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, no, uh, no, today, please, I want everybody, yes.
There's a specific place for public, right?
Yes, please.
Okay. I've also seen us advertised on buses in Chico, like, just across the buses driving by. Yeah, it is awesome.
Do you like that?
I do, yeah, because it's highly visible.
No, I.
And we also have our, our pop-up that I don't see on the list there, but we had at downtown Chico Market, there's a Thursday evening event. And there were three of us there, and my daughter, who's a senior, ran around with the stickers. And she gave people over to our booth, yeah, yes.
I'm glad you spoke up. No, I want, please, every, this is more, we're all in this together today. So, and as we get more into the future discussions, please all do speak up. And I'm glad to hear you say that because, well, we don't live it in the district every day, you do. And so these need to reflect well on you and help you feel proud to work for us. I appreciate you sharing that.
And then I'll also note that we did a photo shoot in North Valley this year, so there's a few photos from that, but.
Really cute boy with the hat that we, we used for years. He aged out, how funny.
It's time for some fresh pieces.
No, he's still around, you know? He is still around. I think he's twenty-three now.
Oh, it's funny.
Yeah, so especially in North Valley, I think with it being, starting at grade six, it's been harder to, like, share across all of the schools' imagery and things. So it's been great to have the North Valley specific photos, especially too for building up the, like, individual spirit of each school. But particularly in showcasing that demographic in our advertising. Alright, taking a look at Riverside. Riverside historically does really well from our digital campaign, and we haven't really had to adjust the strategy much over the past few years. By the end of the campaign, they were at over the targeted enrollment for the November period. And then they also have the most of the niche profile views, and plus on the grade, which is great. And then we're seeing similar trends in the website traffic and top pages. And then on the newsletter opens, kind of similar with North Valley with above average, and then social posts that are gaining about sixty-two eyeballs per post. And then looking at the campaign, we can see eleven direct enrollments from the campaign, and then nearly sixty percent overall reporting that they come from Google. And then just to put that in context to this, during the campaign period, these eleven enrollments that we can, that we can track directly from the campaign, I counted for about nine percent of the enrollment at the time. So really strong performance. And matches from folks that enrolled kind of off the spot.
All of this that you've been talking about, these are all English-speaking ads.
Some of them are Spanish ads, but I would say that the enrollment was more coming from the English. So I have, for example, I'll do a quick recap. So North Bay, we did a, it kind of differentiated based on campuses and what we've spent in the past certain areas and what's performed. North Bay, we had a split of sixty-eight percent English ads and thirty-two percent Spanish ads. North Valley is more skewed towards the English, with eighty-six percent English and about fourteen percent Spanish. And then Riverside is sixty-five, thirty-five, English, Spanish. And then San Diego we'll get to, but that's more, I mean, even split just because of the areas that we were targeting. There was stronger Spanish speaking community. So the way that the ads then worked, there was, there was more Spanish on the Spanish side. So that ended up being a fifty-six to forty-four percent split.
And the spend is dependent on who clicks the ad, right? So we're not necessarily saying we want to spend sixty-five percent of our ads on English. It's like we have the ads, and then the amount we get charged depends on clicks the ad.
Correct, and we'll allocate different budgets for things, but that's how the spend ratio is worked out between the two languages. Alright, and then looking at San Diego. San Diego, we know struggles a little bit more on the enrollment side of things, especially with marketing efforts. So by the end of September, the targeted enrollment for November, they were at about eighty percent. But they do well on niche overall. So they have a minus niche rate, which is great in terms of, like, building the reputation in the community. And then about nearly seven hundred niche profile views. We can see it because of the increased spend for Spanish that we're just touching on. There were more Spanish traffic, there was more Spanish traffic driven to the site. So that kind of skewed the website views and the average site engagement time. There is the opportunity to translate the website, just like through built-in features, to leverage Google Translate. But I think that lowered down the website engagement time overall across all the activity on the site. But we can see here that the Spanish traffic drove to the number one spot with English number two and the homepage being. But we can see here that the Spanish traffic drove to the number one spot with English number two and the homepage being the third option. And then, looking at the newsletter opens, we're a little bit stronger here in San Diego with almost fifty-seven percent open. So, that's great and well above the average. And then, we're getting about fifty eyeballs per social post that comes out. And then, looking at the digital campaign, we can kind of see in the targeted areas, we went a lot more throughout the county. Trying to get more focus on the independent learning part of it and the flexibility of the at-home aspect of Pivot, rather than focusing on work at the resource center, which we still did target within the San Marcos area, but just to extend the reach beyond that and leverage kind of a key offering of Pivot to see how we could increase enrollment and traffic there. So, we have.
So that's a result of the conversation we had about kind of going back to the old days in San Diego. Because remember, we used to have people way down in the southern part of the county. And so, we're like, well, it's not working with the fifteen mile radius around the site. Let's try what we used to do and extend it, so.
And then, overall enrollment during the campaign period was low, which puts the, we had one that could be directly tracked from the campaign, which increases the overall cost per student. In there, but we do see that fifty-three percent of enrollees at San Diego report coming from Google, which helps kind of even out the cost per student, but which is still high, as it usually is in San Diego, at about a hundred per student. And we've supplemented outreach there with some kind of ads. We leveraged the coast news inland edition, some ads throughout the summer there. And then, we've done some more concentrated efforts in San Diego for current family outreach and getting the word out in community groups. So, doing research on Facebook groups that we did, leverage messaging and encourage parents to tell their story in these Facebook groups where other North County or San Diego County parents are. And then, doing more on the event side of things. We had folks at the Harvest Festival in Marcos and at the once upon a book fair event. And kind of seeing, able to kind of also do some of the community representation and just partner engagement in getting San Diego's aware guys that are around the community. And then, another piece of that which was exciting, we submitted Pivot for the San Diego Reader's Choice Best of competition. So, they were the runner-up, the second group, in best public school in North County. So, another thing we can, we've continued to flex on our social media and other marketing efforts.
So, one of those events was the big events where Anna actually got to introduce their keynote speakers twice. It was when I had a funeral to go to, Anna stepped in, and I asked her, I forget whether we said this, I think it was after the last board meeting. I asked her if she was nervous, and I said, on a scale of one to five, how nervous are you? She goes, negative one. And she said, but if I was talking to all of our, my colleagues and our staff, that would be different. But five hundred people in an audience, no problem.
So, kind of looking holistically back across all the efforts and digital campaigns specifically, what's new, what's working. As I was going to, we leveraged Google more for the direct enrollments and we leveraged it more for the awareness side of things. But we added some new pieces to the puzzle this year, just to try things out and continue to expand our reach. And so, we added Google Display Ads, which operates more like the Facebook side of things. So it's not controlled by keywords, but it's just another avenue of Google where a static ad of Pivot enroll now would show up on various webpages, YouTube things within the Google Display Network, so it's gonna reach there. We added a Nextdoor ad, so this was just kind of a trial period for two months. Towards the end of the summer, a two hundred dollar set from campus got about fifteen thousand impressions for each school in terms of just like how many times that ad showed up for someone. No direct enrollment activity from it, so something that we're kind of still testing and exploring. And then, this video, if you click again, let's skip the, okay, darn. This, we did a video in the Facebook ad, switched halfway through to kind of offer more context. Typically, we've done a static image of like a student working or something visual oriented with minimal text. But there's only so much you can say in that copy, and we wanna keep things short so that people will page more of what's at. So, we switched towards the end of the campaign, the lowest performing ad set. We do three ad sets for each campus on Facebook for each language. So we switched the lowest performing ad set out with a video that kind of was more comprehensive to showcase the pivot experience, how there's field trips, social activities, how kind of more of the mission of Pivot in creating safe space and transforming student experiences in education. So, offering a more holistic view within the ad visual. So, kind of as we explore new trends with video overall in social media, leaning into that to help drive clicks and impressions and.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
The version that has the video.
Kaylee, are those video ads translated as well?
We only did it in the English ad set, but something I think that we'll continue to explore in doing the next year's ad revising is leaning more into the video side of things, because we did see higher click ratios on the video ad and doing a translated version so that we can offer that in our Spanish, Spanish ad sets.
You were in the video then.
I missed that.
My plumber did it.
Alright, yeah, I do that.
So, what I like to add is the opportunity to kind of really contextualize the pivot experience. Because I think there is so much more to it than being an online school that has a resource center. And I think seeing kids in the environment and working off of library photos that we've been able to build out both in our partnerships with staff and collecting photos more regularly of field trips and events and activities that are happening on campus, along with the stock photos that we're able to take and use for more like large-scale things based on the resolution quality. Where you can to kind of combine it all together to create something that really encapsulates what Pivot is as an institution.
Great. Thanks for pulling up, it was good to see that.
And then, something else that we've been really working towards is having that stronger presence in the community, being there, outsourcing events for staff to go to, and then having a physical presence, bringing folks to the campus and just building the awareness of stakeholders from physical efforts like that. And then, we're also working to kind of continue to generate positive reviews for Pivot. I think the testimonial aspect of things really helps offer a lot of context on how students are affected by Pivot in a positive way. And like, we all see that at graduation, when people are giving their speeches and things like that, it's very touching and really provides a lot more, just broad overview of what Pivot really does to affect students. So, working to build out the positive reviews on things like Niche in general and leveraging testimonial content through our advertising. And then, lastly, more photos and personalized campus content, so really going with that pictures, speak a thousand words, videos are a thousand pictures, to really offer the full look at what Pivot is and how it can to drive changes in people's educational experiences. And then, something that looking ahead, we're exploring now and continuing to explore is expanding physical signage near the school. So, something that was really successful in North Valley was the bus side ads, was the billboard, was the bus shelter ads, especially for the North Valley state. So, we have continued to move that direction. And right now, we're working on a four-panel window plane to go that'll be on the building so that folks driving by will see it, it'll be kind of billboard in itself, but just at the campus itself. And then, we're also exploring options in Pivot San Diego with percentage along the interest in the free road. I know that campus is a little bit more tucked away off of the beaten path. And so, that road has a lot more street traffic, so finding ways that we can tell people that Pivot is there and build awareness outside of that. Looking into other options like how we have explored for North Valley in just getting more physically in the community. And then, something else we're working toward is cultivating stronger media relations momentum. So, we have some outreach in progress to education specific reporters, kind of helping to build on the news stories and getting that reach extended throughout the community. And then, we also have a few TV ads that we're exploring specifically in San Diego. But I think as a whole, we'll be looking more closely at video driving the content. And same thing with imagery, as we know, attention spans shorter, and we wanna be able to add so much life and context to the advertising. So, we're able to do that more effectively with stronger image and video content. And then, lastly, things that we're exploring is continuing to follow trends in social media. So a few kind of big picture trends, one being pay-to-play. These days, digital advertising is how you get views on your content. Algorithms will prioritize content when there's more boosting happening. So, looking to boost posts throughout the year. So that way to the message that's getting to the community isn't always just enroll now. It's here's a current enrollment student that had this success story, or here's a financial literacy workshop that we did on campus. Individual stories and highlights like that, that help build the context of everything that Pivot offers. And then, leveraging a hundred dollars here and there to boost that content and get that out to the community so that we have advertising effort, paid advertising efforts on social media that extend beyond the traditional summer campaign and extend beyond the traditional enrollment-focused messaging. And then, second is videos being prioritized in algorithms. So, we know short videos are kind of dominating the space of social media. So that's something that these platforms continue to push above static content. So, looking to incorporate more videos in our strategy. And for example, I know our info nights, we've gradually reduced the process for that because they just weren't generating the turnout. And so, what we're doing now is reevaluating the internet content and working with Gina to record an info night reel series that will take the content into short, like one-minute video segments that we can then boost and have across platforms. And then, that saves on the staff resource time and then is also more effective in the overall social media trend landscape.
So planting a seed with board members and, I don't know, Board Member Martella's on. We, they do, we do collectively great press releases, and they don't get picked up by our local papers. So, just putting it out there for y'all's contacts and people you might know. The ed reporters don't pick them up, they write exceptional, you know, we give them the ideas, we throw it back and forth, we edit it, they do an exceptional job at writing them, they just don't get picked up. Even graduations, where we had the mayor, you know, they doesn't get picked up. Photos of the mayor announcing that the mayor was there, handing out diplomas, doesn't get picked up. So just, we'll talk about it in a little time.
News sent to people is negative. I mean, it's always been that way, it's always that way, they always tell you, news is the exception to the paper, not the topic. You have to wish your memory, in case you don't wanna be the paper. But I have a question, do you ever have interacted with parents looking before you do stuff to say, okay, I'm gonna show you some things, then I'll turn to A, B, and C. Which one would get your attention, to the parents themselves, even in the local area or maybe anywhere for that? Because sometimes as professionals, you see it a certain way, and they don't see it that way at all. And it's like getting back to the ground and saying, oh, I, I used to work with one board member. And professional, you know, they, we had an issue, we couldn't solve it, and she's, I mean, thought about doing it this way. She'd never run a business, she'd never done anything but that, she'd have, you've thought about this, and going, no, we never thought of that. So, pretty glad you brought it up, it didn't hit our brain at all. So anyway, I wonder if you occasionally check with parents, if they're interested, okay, we're gonna test this on you, let me know what you think, the video or the ad or the, whatever it is. And this got my attention, I was like, I wouldn't read this, or I would, but anyway, so. Assume you do stuff like that.
Yeah, it's a great point, Tom.
A sampling, I call it, a sampling of some sort.
We do.
I think Anna's gears are going too, it feels.
Yeah, we haven't done necessarily concentrated focus group testing like that, but we anecdotally like run it across parents on our team. So, we have a nice team of moms who have looked at our content on the traffic side of things, but I think there could be more, six more in that.
We've been doing one each, even each site kind of a, can you invite some parents in, we'd like to ask you, look at some of this stuff? No, but you just by doing that, you submit to that relationship with them, and then say, I'd like to, three or four of you to come in. If you look at this for this, this is how we're doing this, what would you suggest we do in this area that would make a difference?
Yeah.
And just ask a couple of them, at each site, or whatever, you know.
We've done focus group research, not every product client, and asked if this is something we'd like to pursue, or have a conversation with Gina about how we'd like that happen, right, agree. One of the things that has happened, Kaylee, you had noted that there were like an ad campaign, pre-series ad campaign of running in the local public ad and replaced with video. In some ways, that having multiple ad campaigns running at the same time, they self-select which one they're responding to. And so, we started to get some data points about which one is actually directly collecting some engagement, which is helpful. It's not the direct A/B testing, you're rightfully pointing out, could be happening, and so we had a conversation on how to do that. We also, FM3 is a big survey researcher in California, they have some toolsets, we collaborated them on, some additional testing provided.
Yeah, and we've done more of the sit downs with campus staff, so specifically in North Valley and San Diego. So that's, for example, what generated the whole billboard concept in terms of like how we have been following this, and we have, but we were budget constrained, so with the opportunity to explore things this year differently, that's how we were able to implement that. So, it is something that we work in, and we can definitely look into more of the focus group on the parents side of things.
You're telling that to only ones that are doing.
Yeah.
I had a tangential question, is there, in the data you collect from the clicks and other things, are there, can you tell if there's a certain message or a certain phrase?
Keyword.
Is more clicked or more.
That's a great question.
A better hook than others, like you learn more, struggle less. Do parents, when they see that click, can we tell that, or what is it?
Yes and no, I would say, you know, each of the ad sets have slightly different coverage, and we can see, you know, which ad set performs the strongest. I'd say overall, they're relatively similar, so I don't think there's enough data to really differentiate there. But on the Google side of things, for Google search ads, we can see, you know, what the strongest performing search term is. So, for most of them, it's just someone searching charter school or schools near me. So, that's not what really translates across to the other ads where we're like building the message around it, rather than like boosting the search engine placement of Pivot's website. But it is something that we can draw out some broad insights for. And but there's no way to know, was it, you know, San Juan, Marshall, or West, or was it they liked that case that's in the photo better? So.
Anything else?
Yes. One other thing, yeah. So, the comment on the news, having thinking about maybe additional news sources, like, I don't know if we've tried public radio, but it's more informative than, and maybe could be a way to get our stories out there.
Yes, we have tried it radio before, it's a little bit of a trigger market just in terms of knowing the return on investment. So, what we've done instead in recent years is leverage Spotify advertising as sort of our radio equivalent, where we're able to then target a little bit more based on audience demographics and interests and have the tracking of the results, the impressions and clicks and things like that. It wasn't, we did get a direct enrollment, I think, from Spotify, or at least a forms submission last year. But this year, it wasn't as strong. I think historically, radio just hasn't performed as strong for the dollar amount that goes into it compared to investing in a Google search ad or a Facebook ad. So, it's always a balance of priorities to budget, but it is something that we look into and continually evaluate each year.
So, I just want to start out one thing, what was your question about advertising, what's your question about press releases going to NPR?
It's really about press release.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So, Kaylee is a lead in our Meltwater Media Intelligence practice at the firm, which does all sorts of media monitoring and also media resource identification. Could you just take a moment, thirty seconds, to just talk about like where you generate, who we, who the media contacts are that we're sending press releases to and follow-up efforts we do to actually get the run out of press release?
Yeah, so, Meltwater as a platform is a, is. Yeah, so Meltwater as a platform is a, it sort of operates as if Google or had an entire database that you can work within. So we can search key terms and outline specific information together to identify key stories that are about schools in Santa Rosa or general health and charter policy news, things like that. And so we have a digest report that goes to our team, to Gina, that tracks on key news of other schools in each of the regions and then also broadly looking at health, lineage, charter, policy news, CTA, et cetera, the key terms that are related to this. And so in that, we are able to see who's writing about different things related to these topics. And then also on the flip side, Meltwater has an entire journalist database. Based on this information, beats and what the conversations are and locations and things like that, where we can build like a tailored wheelers that we would then as a team also run past other, like our advertising resources. And for example, like we advertise in the Coast News in San Diego. And we've also worked with them to try and get connected to their reporting side of things so that we can leverage placements in there that aren't necessarily an app. So we attack it from a few different angles, building out through Meltwater, finding who are the relevant reporters, some other kind of like broader research that our team puts into it to fact-check everything, make sure that contact information is up to date, and then also working through our advertising contacts. And then when we pitch a story, we'll send a new join scheme mail to each of those people and do a roll-up if there's no, nothing heard back from it. So we have not had the greatest success in terms of getting a response from folks. And we had a few teammates who, on the Trumpy team in general, who came from a newspaper prior to joining the Trumpy team. So we've been working with them more closely on how to kind of mold the relationship with their reporters and really build traction on that outside of just pitching content so that we can have a relationship to work from and then hopefully see more results on the placement side of things.
And then final quick question, is NPR on the list of media distribution items?
NPR, I don't, we have it less focused on like national.
I guess in the local public NPR station.
No, our, our password is focused on print for the most part and digital like platforms, but not necessarily radio. So that kind of thing is going to be sort of.
Good point.
Good point.
Thank you. So two comments. One, I'm really happy to see that you highlighted that we're getting more, really, we have more of a relationship with our counselors because that is absolutely true. People are coming, calling again and again, saying, hey, I've got the student for you. And so we're building those relationships and that's really impressive. Also, what I'm noticing is that people are getting more desperate, it seems like. We're looking at a bunch of school closures in Santa Rosa City Schools. On Monday, they're going to announce the school closures. So for example, either Montgomery or Elsie Allen are going, they're saying is going to close. They're going to be merging these high schools. And so.
Merging high schools?
Yeah. One of the kids I just met yesterday who's at my room, he says, you know, hey, our school is all Norteños and these guys are all Serenios. And this is going to be ugly and can I come to your school instead? So that's happening. There's three elementary closing apparently and one middle school.
One middle school.
So this is kind of huge because these turf wars are, can get ugly. So I'm thinking we're going to see a jump. I'm anticipating that. I'm really curious about the click rate, you know, and how people are coming in.
So should we be advertising now?
No.
I was just curious.
Yeah, for teachers, yes. Thank you, thank you, Sarah. Absolutely. And we are.
We can't serve the kids right now.
And, and, you know, we, we in the past, the board has given me direction on caps on North Bay overall, not just lottery.
Gotcha.
You know, so we need, if you want to reopen that discussion, today's the day, but I'm going to push back. I don't want to be big with this. I don't want to be big.
Let's close San Marcos.
Close school places and then that would be.
So my, my guess is, and I don't know this because I haven't spoken to anybody, so this is not inside scoop by any stretch, but I know how these things work. They're saying they're going to close three and they'll close one, right? And people will be happy. They're saying they're closing, but the middle school is determined already, it's set.
I close them high schools.
Finding them, as Anna said.
We close.
So, yeah. Truckee, Truckee has closed schools. It's going to happen everywhere out of state.
It's a business.
It is, it has to be because.
Money in, money out, and if it's, and overhead is constant, so you have, it would make this work. It's a business.
A high school closes.
High schools are the worst.
Wow.
We close schools and it was hell to pay. Well, I get it. It's an neighborhood falls apart. I mean, they think it will.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right.
Board, you have always told Liz and me over the years that, you know, North Bay are max is, and you've asked me what my opinion was, and it was five hundred forever, no more, because we can't do what we set out to do. Bigger isn't better, focus on the kids we have and do it well. And so that's, you know.
Right.
And Anna and I were just.
But I think it's the same for the conversations like what Anna and other people, what they're hearing when people call them, conversations you can hear when they call it. That's also part of your sampling is how, what's the conversation coming into here as part of this analysis? Who's calling us and why? And that's part of your process too, is, you know, asking her and people like that, all right, what happened last week or the week before, whenever called in to see us or talk to us, wherever it is, that's where it goes.
Yeah.
You got to get stuff like that, you got to.
Nicole. I just wanted to add, you mentioned earlier there were four counties in California where enrollment is not declining.
What are those? San Bernardino, Riverside, Placer. Declining enrollment for school age children, sorry. What? Okay. San Bernardino, San Bernardino.
Riverside, Placer.
Riverside, Placer. I think maybe there's only three that I know of, that in speaking with Eric and other people, do you want to add to that?
So there, there are some slides in the presentation where we're talking about enrollment over time. And Riverside has declined, but it's like one percent. They've been holding steady, they've been battling off whatever is happening elsewhere. But even the ones who have seen like to stay steady are starting to drop now. So it might not be long that Riverside stays on the list.
Because here's Orange County, because Irvine is building new schools, so very affluent and they're holding first-hand schemes.
Yeah, I'm sure we can Google it, but that wasn't, so one of the questions I asked after Jim got off the phone with the attorney, because I know this guy, actually, he and I worked with Eric, we overlapped before he even got his law, his, before he passed the bar, Jerry worked with Eric. And he, I asked him where can we get a charter if that's anything we're interested in, in this climate? And he said, those are the three that he had mentioned because they weren't experiencing a significant decline. He didn't bring up Orange County, but.
Well, that's just on purpose.
Yeah. So the question was also around who friendly the charters.
I'm pretty sure Eric did this slide.
Okay.
Yeah, I think he did. Yeah.
Kaylee, great.
Yes, wonderful. Thank you. It's a joy working with you.
Appreciate it. Seeing all you're doing in all the areas you, all the, thank you, appreciate it.